We have a quorum. It takes us to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. We have no one in the audience tonight, so I don't think we have any questions coming from the audience. Takes us to approval of minutes for September 8th, 2020. Can I have a motion to approve? Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
One.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
The minutes have been approved. Receiving of communications. Do Aldermen have communications? Alderwoman Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have continuous communication going on with some residents in the Pinehurst subdivision regarding the installation of a fence at along Bailey Road on the Carriage Greens property. And I have circled back with Carriage Greens owner Brian Broderick, and that is in the works. I do, once again, it's kind of like my PSA announcement every meeting, want to remind residents to please not walk, ride, dog walk, children play on the course when it's an active course and players are there. It's very dangerous, and we're just most concerned about your safety. Also related to Carriage Greens, I did receive an email communication from a resident, Drew Kelly, inquired, since it's about a year ago, to be exact, that we came into an agreement with Carriage Greens, an economic development incentive arrangement with Carriage Greens, and he had several questions about that economic development arrangement. And just to kind of summarize, I did let Mr. Kelly know that the city council had approved the agreement -- I'll move this over a little bit -- on September 3rd. I did share that agreement with them through the city website, and the incentive was for support for upgrades subject to $366,000. That's the cap amount. This includes line items for golf, kitchen, and facilities. The agreement is clear that in that agreement, Exhibit 1, listing the not-all-inclusive and line item changes can be made. So I was trying to clarify that with Mr. Kelly. COVID-19 has affected Carriage Greens business, as it has all our Darian businesses, which includes golf, restaurant service, and banquet service. Due to these effects, Carriage Greens has made some line item revisions as followed by the agreement. For example, the fountain will not be installed, and other landscape features will be installed in its place at a later date. This will free up funds to be used in other line items. This would increase category expenses and reduce other categories of expenses in an equal amount, so that the total does not exceed the approved $366,000. Staff periodically meets with Carriage Greens to review expenses and work on as provided in the agreement. So, and I also put Mr. Kelly in contact with Mr. Vanna for some further questions. And, you know, just looking forward to continued improvements. I've been going over to Carriage Greens, playing golf and dining, and been very pleased to see the progress that has been made. Another resident reached out about concerns in the Carriage Greens neighborhood about refuse being put out way too early, and wanted clarification on how early can garbage and refuse be placed out. And I did confirm that it's 24 hours in advance of the date of your pickup, so I just requested that residents please adhere to that. And if it's a windy day, which fall days have a tendency to be windy, please secure all your recyclables so they don't blow over all over the street. And lastly, I know many of us received a public safety announcement from the Richard Dorgensen, MD, the coroner of DuPage County. And I did have a resident, you know, email me that, even though I had received it. And I just thought I would share, you know, in summary, obviously, the public safety announcement is regarding the surge in suicide deaths over the last six months. And Coroner Dorgensen concludes, "It appears that an unforeseen collateral consequence of the stresses of shelter at home, which resulted in isolation, lack of community, companionship, is taking its toll on the most vulnerable of our society. If you know of people who are high at risk, known drug users, those in rehabilitation, persons living alone, having personal, financial, or marital difficulty, mental health issues or depression, please reach out. You can still wear a mask and socially distance, but reach out and talk to them and see if they need companionship, companionship, support, or help." These are difficult times made worse when an individual has mental health, depression, and addiction issues. We are on this together and need to reach out to all those who are vulnerable in this difficult time. And I just want to echo that. It's so important to check in with people. And that's it. Thank you.
Michael?
Yeah, I think it's just important to clarify one thing with respect to the Carriage Greens economic incentive, to point out to the residents that it was not done in the form of a grant. It was done in the form of a loan to be repaid over 10 years. So, just so people understand that it wasn't just outright giving the money, that it was, again, it's to be repaid.
Repaid how? You should try to clarify that.
Okay, it's repaid either through additional taxes that will be collected as a result of the improvements, or if there is no additional amount as a result of that, it would have to be repaid as a result -- other ways, either out of his personal assets, or I don't know if he'd have to consider selling part of the property, but we do have a lien on the property as collateral for the loan.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Joe Lester's got some comments. He said--
Lester?
I'm here. Can you guys hear me? I can see you on the big screen.
Yes, we can hear you.
I have three, three, uh, three, uh, pieces of communication. One from Miguel at 7314 Brookbank. He reached out in regards to the house on 7300 Clarity Hills Road, 7313 Clarity Hills Road. That's being used as an Airbnb. Many of you guys were copied on the email. But he mentioned that there's sometimes it's used to people on the premises throughout the night on the week, on the weekends. And he also said he notified Darian PD several times, but it's becoming, it's getting out of control. So that's why he contacted the city. Number two, Mike and Kathleen Maiden, or Madden, 702 Maple Lane. They reached out about an inappropriate political sign with profanity hanging from the window of their neighbor's house. They mentioned that it sets a bad precedent for kids, and it's not a good reflection on the area of the Darian culture. My last and final communication, I was contacted by a resident regarding an incident with the Darian Police Department and her son. Apparently, her son was having some issues, and when the police were called, he was combative and did not want to go with the officers. According to this resident, the officers who showed up were able to de-escalate the situation and ultimately got her son to go with them willingly. I would like to thank, I would like to compliment Chief Thomas and the officers that were called to that incident over the weekend on how they handled the situation, and they were able to de-escalate with no problem. In this resident's own words, he said the police treated her son and her family with dignity and respect. So much of what we see in the country where there are negative issues and results actually comes in at that moment when tensions either are increased or situations are de-escalated. So this is the best practices I wish we could see everywhere, and I'm really proud of the way Darian PD handled this. It's a good example, a great example of good police. And that's it.
Thank you, Les. Anyone else have anything? Alderman Clistic?
Thank you, Mayor. I received five, six pieces of communication. First one comes from Mr. Stephen Delurgio. He's an unincorporated Darian. He brought up that, I guess, there is a zoning vote at the county with regards to a municipal complex for a soccer field going next to the warehouse. He just wants to make sure that the county does a traffic study with regards to COVID. You have so many rural residents out there, bikers, hikers, that he wrote an email out to the county to make sure they do a traffic study in that area. So he's not for or against, just wanted to make me aware, and I just wanted to make council aware of that going on over there. Second piece of communication, Steve Leopoldo mentioned to me with regards to concern of few businesses not wearing masks. I brought it up to Mayor, and I think we took a look at it, got that addressed. Next piece of communication from Mrs. Connie Kelly and Tamara Frederickson, both in support of backyard chickens. I know we're still working on the ordinance on that, that's still on the table, but they're in support of that. Lastly, I did get communication from Mr. Drew Kelly that is in Mary's Ward. However, there were some questions that I had that sort of got my head scratching a little bit with regards to Carriage Greens. I know, Mary, you mentioned that they're using some of the funds due to COVID and some other items. But if I recall correctly, when I was brought to council, the point of the loan and everything was to, as a capital expenditure, to improve the items there. But it sounds like they've changed to a day-to-day operations of the funds then, right? So I think you mentioned that you're not doing it anymore, or you're not--
No, they have, if, in the agreement itself, there's several categories of improvements: golf, facilities, one other category. Within those categories, there was a number of items. And not all of those items either came in at bid price or ended up as something as a priority. And I think, as Alderwoman Sullivan mentioned, COVID, COVID was mentioned because that has changed how the business was operating over the last six months. It wasn't used for COVID expenses. So as an example, nobody's, which I think, Tam, if I understood--
Yeah, yeah, I'm worried if it's used for day-to-day, and then there might be a bigger picture that I'm concerned that I'm unaware of.
No, it's not for that. So as an example, it's probably one of the better examples. There was money in the agreement to be used on the HVAC system, and they had the HVAC company out, and they did some work in the front lobby area that would have an impact on the whole building. So they did not, at this point, spend any more money on any HVAC in the big ballroom because they're not having any events. So instead, they're looking at some additional items and to use that money in other categories. Some of it for the golf course, some of it will be for equipment. So they varied in the categories, but it didn't change the ten. It's not, they're spending their own money on a lot of COVID-related safety items, but that's not coming from the loan we have given them.
Okay, I'm just concerned that, you know, people who support it, that maybe that changed with the, you know, the reasoning for the support for Carriage Greens. So that was the concern I had there.
And as the mayor and I met with the golf course, you know, it was really a nice conversation, and we had, we talked through, you know, obviously, when you have the golf course and you have banquets in the restaurant, the patio has been a hit, that's for sure. The golf, the golf has been doing very well, but the banquets have not. So obviously, some of the things he's looking to do is continue that focus on improvements to the golf itself where they're really doing well. And again, that certainly is within the scope of the agreement, and specifically in language in the agreement, because when we did enter, the council approved that agreement, and all of us who worked on that agreement knew it could not be set in stone. And over the next X amount of months, there would be things that might come up. So if he's going to get bunker sand, how much bunker sand would you really need? So there's adjustments. And I think they, again, you know, he cannot exceed that amount, and he is still investing significant amount, you know, from his own money into the course, like is the agreement. So everything that is in the agreement is adhered to.
Okay, so that's different than like the Dunkin' Donuts, where once they're finished, they're given a check, and it was exactly money spent for the brick facade--
Correct.
--to upgrade. Well, this is a different type--
This is more ongoing, yes. So if he does some certain improvements, then he gets his money.
Okay, so then, once those improvements are done, then the check's given out to him or whatever improvements are done, correct? So, for example, Dunkin', oh, sorry, Dunkin' Donuts or anything, once the improvement is done, then we give them the money for that improvement? Or is it already given to them, and then they give payments back?
Well, in the agreement, he has been submitting for payments--
Okay, okay, so it's as you go.
--ongoing. So, you know, and those payments have come before the council, probably six or seven of those have already been on the council's agenda for approval, and there's approximately $90,000 left of the 366 that is not used. And I expect he'll be submitting reimbursement for that balance within the next 30 days.
Okay, so it's as you go. Gotcha. Okay. No, understandable. And then, lastly, I did receive a thank you from Shiva Sushi with regards to the rebating of the taxes for food and beverage as well. So I think, hopefully, that helped Carriage Greens as well, because I think they probably got some food and beverage reimbursement as well, so.
Okay. Just one other clarification as well. I read all the correspondence between Alderwoman Sullivan and Mr. Kelly, and there was a question he had in there about, he said the agreement says we get to use Carriage Greens for different events. You know, has Mr. Broderick offered that? I've been, Mr. Gombach and Mr. Vanna and I were actually over there before COVID, and we actually looked at the outside area before the patio was being built, and we actually talked about where we would have that venue, where we would have the concerts. And as a lot of you remember, we actually budgeted money originally in the budget for three concerts, as well as management of those concerts, and the equipment that we would need. And so I want Mr. Kelly to know that we did have those discussions with Mr. Broderick. We did even talk about the site on his property where those would take place, and he agreed to that. He thought that was a wonderful idea. We talked about food vendors. They would be able to come over there and service that area. And with COVID, all of that ended. And as you guys know, we took that money out of the budget, and so we'll renew those talks again this next year. Mary?
And just to, since obviously Carriage Greens is in Ward 5, which I'm the alderperson for, there's also been a willingness and open discussion, and whenever you're ready to host even a ward event, or, you know, I could, it's been offered that, you know, I know, Tam, you do block parties, like if there's anything from just my Ward 5 community to do. But at this point, you know, we're erring on the side of caution and not doing any gatherings even outside at this point.
In fact, they're going to be hosting the Darian Women's Club this year for all their meetings, and they're not charging them anything for use of the facility for all their meetings. So he is making the banquet areas available for them.
Which works. I'm a member of the Darian Women's Club, and it works well, because the Park District has always been very gracious. But because of COVID, their hours now are much shorter. So because of us being able to go to Carriage Greens, we can have not only a business meeting, but a program as well. And he's given us the entire upstairs so we can space out very comfortably and socially distance and still do our program.
Alderman Kenny?
Just got two communications, Mr. Mayor. Stephanie Kohan on 77th Street is in favor of chickens, and John Norbert, Norbut, I'm not sure if his wife was Carol, but he's not in favor of chickens and bees. That's all I got.
Anything else? Just to update all of you, if you got the Darian Direct Connect on Thursday, we started a new feature called Ask the Mayor, or Have the Mayor Clarify a Rumor. And as I sat there the other night, I told Mr. Vanna, my phone went bing, 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 and probably got about 10 or 15 of those questions, which I came in on Friday. And I spent a lot of the day responding personally to those individual questions ranging from, what are we going to do for Halloween, to whatever, you know, to chickens and such. I think it's a great idea. I had a couple of residents sent me an email back and said, "Thank you very much. We appreciate this." This is a great way to avoid rumors getting started or misinformation. So that's my communication. I can't give you every one of them, but somewhere down the line, we're going to summarize what we're getting in terms of those questions, and we'll put that information out to the public so they know that people are asking these kind of questions. Anything else? Okay, takes us to the mayor's report, and I've got something I wanted to share with you under the mayor's report. I said, "In this era of COVID-19, we have all had to make adjustments to the way we conduct our lives. Our use of social distancing and wearing face masks will probably be with us for the remainder of 2020 and possibly into 2021. As many of you know, these changes have also impacted our businesses. We are asked to wear masks as we enter businesses, and when we dine out, we are asked to wear our masks as we enter the dining area and when we meet our server. While all of our local businesses are working to do their part, we unfortunately find instances when staff or personnel fail to adhere to these mandates. We recently had one unfortunate incident at Carriage Greens that was reported on social media. Because of this incident, we had a discussion with the Carriage Greens management regarding this occurrence. They responded with an apology for their actions and a commitment to ensure that there is no further recurrence. We are all human. As humans, we make mistakes, and in this instance, the Carriage Greens staff acknowledged their mistake. In our discussion with Carriage Greens management, we were made aware of actions that were already taken to reassure their patrons that golf and dining at the country club were being conducted with concern for the safety and health of their patrons. I would add that many of these procedures or protocols are being used and promoted by many of our local businesses, and we thank them for their compliance." The one item that I would mention is that they, Carriage Greens noted that they're spending in the neighborhood of $100 a day on PPE, chemicals, and labor due to COVID. So they're washing your tables down, et cetera, cleaning the washrooms every three hours. The washrooms get washed and disinfected. So while we had this incident, I wanted people to know that they are following through and practicing proper procedures. I would also like to note that due to our combined efforts here in DuPage County, the Illinois Department of Health has reclassified the counting to blue status as it relates to the COVID risk metrics. We have a color-coded risk system through DuPage County Health Department, and the Illinois Department of Public Health is, are the ones who rate it. And if two of the metrics go up in the same week, we go into what's called the orange category. And we went up into the orange category over a week ago. Two weeks in a row at the orange level, and we start seeing restrictions placed on us with regard to restaurants and other activities. Well, fortunately, through our efforts, efforts of residents here in Darian and ourselves, we went back into the blue status as of Friday. And while that's a positive thing, we need to remain vigilant in terms of wearing masks, washing our hands, maintain our social distancing. Each of us has a responsibility, not just to ourselves, but we have a responsibility to one another. And the reason we went back into the blue is because the rates went down in both those areas. So we need to continue to be vigilant. I have to remind people of that. The other thing is, I received a call on Friday, not a call, I received an Ask the Mayor question on Friday regarding our plans for celebrating Halloween. I feel that many parents and residents have the same question in mind, so I'd like to provide you with your information we currently have from the Health Department. Last week, on a Zoom call with the DuPage County Health Department, DuPage mayors were told that the Illinois Department of Public Health would soon be publishing guidelines with respect to how municipalities handle the holiday in their communities. To date, we have not received anything from the IDPH, so at this time, I can only say that when we receive this information, we will publish it in our Darian Direct Connect and through our other social media outlets. As mayor, I believe that trick-or-treating is a parental decision, and I would have advised parents to make sure they were practicing all forms of safety under our current health conditions. My hope is that the guidelines are not so restrictive as to end this practice, but we would need to wait to see what happens when the Health Department proposal comes through. And to answer Alderwoman Sullivan's concern that she received through one of her communications, "On Friday, I attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony for Edgewood, which is a mental health facility, which is occupying the second floor of the 7900 building on Cass Avenue." Edgewood is a counseling and psychiatric firm, and they're here in Darian. They're part of a larger corporation. They have five locations in the Chicagoland area, and our office in Darian is one of their largest, and it is a beautiful facility. They inhabit the entire second floor. And in my conversations with them, we have talked about the possibility of some pro bono work they may do with the city in terms of working with us, working with our police, or working with our residents. So we're pursuing that at this point. So I wanted to mention that. That was a wonderful opportunity for me, and I truly enjoyed meeting with these people, and I look forward to building on that relationship. As you know, mental health issues are critical, especially during this COVID time period. And COVID fatigue is something that you're going to hear people mention over and over again. And beyond COVID fatigue, and as Mary mentioned, suicides in this country are up this year as compared to the same time period last year. And we need to do everything we can to help those within our community who are suffering from mental health issues. So that ends my report, and it takes us to our next item on our agenda, which is City Clerk's Report. Joanne?
I would just like to reiterate what I had stated at the last council meeting, that the city of Darian election materials for the April 6, 2021 consolidated election may be picked up here at Darian City Hall beginning tomorrow, September 22. Available elected positions for a four-year term include aldermen for Ward 1, 3, 5, and 7. Candidates are encouraged to seek the advice of legal counsel before filing nomination papers, which must be in apparent conformity with the election code. The first day to file is December 14 of 2020 at 8:30 a.m., and the last day to file is December 21, 2020 at 4:30 p.m. And the regular business hours here at Darian City Hall are Monday through Friday from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. City Administrator's Report, Brian?
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Department had information and questions. Any questions for Chief Thomas? Greg, do you have anything you would like to add? Thank you. Come forward.
I am. Last week, he asked about the, how well the camera program was going. So far, there's been 117 cameras that have been purchased, $19,655 that's been asked for in reimbursement, and $17,100 that has been spoken for for reimbursement, leaving about $2,800 left in net, Grant. So it's been going very well.
Chief Thomas, are we continuing to receive applications now that we've kind of run through the money? Are we still--
They're trickling in now. There was a huge response at the very beginning, and now they're just trickling in.
Because I was wondering if we might want to consider as a council adding some additional funds to that, since that's been such a good program.
Well, I'll find you out from Sergeant Squares, who's been running the program, so I'll find out from him and give you a better answer.
Oh, here it is, Dan. Thank you.
Municipal Services, Mr. Gombach. Dan, I don't think you need to give us the entire report again, but you can give us some highlights.
Sure. I was really looking forward to the whole report again, Mr. Mayor.
Don't hold report again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, city council, our viewing residents. Everyone can hear me? Now, let me know if you can hear me. Well, if you can't, then he'll be out here. Earlier this year, back early--
Dan, unless your mic's in front of the glass, I can't tell from here. It's hard to hear at home, so--
Put it over here, because I can speak pretty loud. Maybe the feedback won't be as bad. Anyway, earlier this year, Alderman Clistic requested of staff on reviewing potential code amendments regulating minimal architectural and design standards. So we had the opportunity to do some research. Our research included various towns: Woodridge, Bowling Brook, Woolbrook, Burr Ridge, Westmont, Lamont, Downers Grove, and several others. We compiled a chart for the city council, and the bottom line is, does the city council want to consider such an ordinance for architectural design reviews? In a brief summary, what this refers to is when a business, let's say that's Brookhaven, for example, comes in for a redevelopment. If they come in for a redevelopment, does the city council want to have the authority of design standards? Those design standards may refer to brick and mortar, architectural metal, or certain materials of the city council's liking. In conjunction with that, we also have residential. Does the city council want to review and look at residential architectural standards? As you recall, rolling noles was part of a, they requested some variations. With those variations, this also became a negotiating opportunity for the city and the builder, in this case, McNorton Development, to have a facade brick on the front of the homes. So while there is opportunities for negotiation-- So while there is opportunities for negotiations, there's also an opportunity to create ordinances for design minerals. I'm not going to get into the real guts of it. So what we're looking for this evening from the City Council, and I'll be more than happy to entertain any questions, is some direction. That direction being, should we, should staff come back with some design guidelines? Those design guidelines, should they include commercial? Should they include residential? If so, what are the limits of that commercial? Is it a standalone building, for example, Brookhaven? For a residential section, is it a standalone, single-family home that's been torn down or razed, and they want to put a new home on there? Or do we want to apply to, again, something with more mass, such as a rolling noles? So with that said, we'll look at also what type of material is the City Council looking for? Is it brick and mortar? Is it metal? I know Alderman Clistic earlier brought up a material of brick look-alike that is actually metal. So we'd like to have some input direction on that. I know it's a loaded question for all this evening. Maybe if there is opportunities, you can email me if there is a sensation to move further with this type of guideline or ordinance.
Any questions for Dan? I know we had some discussion before, but are there any questions now? Alderman Clistic?
Thank you, Mayor. I would support moving forward on the commercial side. The residential, I'm not sure if I'm 100% in favor. I'd be looking for feedback from anyone else, but on the commercial side, I would support having an ordinance there.
Alderman Vaughn, do you have any questions for Mr. Gombe?
No questions for me.
Thank you. Mary?
I know, as Mr. Gombe had mentioned earlier, you know, a lot of our community is built up. I think we might start to see like a tear-down situation in certain areas. I know a lot of communities like Hinsdale and Western Springs have enacted ordinance in terms of tear-down and when things are rebuilt. You know, it also depends, I guess, on its location. I know I have had several residents in the area of Evergreen Lane over by Carriage Greens where two homes were recently built that used to be part of the golf course, and they're lots. You know, they obviously, the homes in that area are, you know, in excess of 20 to 25 years old, and now, you know, any style new home looks different than necessarily a home that's 25, 30 years ago. But some of them express concern that, you know, they stand out a lot because they are so different with not having all brick, or one of them doesn't have any brick at all. So, but that's kind of an unusual thing because, you know, we don't have a lot of vacant lots, per se.
That is correct. And again, while a lot of it is subjective, there is opportunity for negotiations with larger-scale developments or redevelopments or planned unit developments. Also, there's a fine line of how a municipality can implement certain items. I know there's a lot of legal discussion on the subject out there, but nonetheless, Mr. Mayor?
It just depends on what direction the council wants to move into if they want to. I mean, you provided a very comprehensive report as far as I'm concerned. I think that, as Alderman Sullivan said, that there is a possibility that on the eastern end of Darien, we could see some significant redevelopment. And personally, I think it might be appropriate for us to take a look at how we might want to govern development in that area.
And again, it depends on the development that may come in. How large of a scale is it? There's always, there will always be opportunities for variations. With those variations becomes negotiations. And again, I mentioned earlier, as it may be a street widening or a street reduction, reduction in sidewalk. So there's always opportunities for a give and take. Again, Darien Point's a prime example of what we did there.
You know, I will add, having been on the council longer than most of you, that all the development that's taken place over my 23 years on this council has resulted in what I consider very fine-looking buildings. The center down the street, this, down here, where Mr. Clay's has his office before he gets to the gas station, I remember we set standards for them with regard to what we wanted those buildings to look like. Mr. Corin's area over there, when that was built, we set standards over there, and that's a beautiful office park. The office park that's over there by the Walgreens, behind the Walgreens. And again, you know, we didn't offer any economic incentive, but those buildings are all beautiful-looking buildings. So we've achieved nice architectural design in areas without having something on paper that says you must do this or you must do that. So do we need to actually put something on paper? That's my question.
In my staff's opinion, we've looked at, and again, to your, to expound, my answer is no, but to expound on your point, I look at what has been done, and started with the center of town, the water tower, Bono Beef when they came in, Speedway, Darien Point, and now we have 75 Dunkin' Donuts, the new Dunkin' Donuts going up. So those are all brick and mortars, and all the color schemes have all been put together to where there's a good blend there. So again, to your point.
What is the feeling of the council? Do we pursue this or what? Tom?
So in reading through your lengthy analysis, we can either codify using ordinance or through a comprehensive plan. And it would seem to me, maybe a comprehensive plan makes more sense for us. It's less strict. It lets the people that do want to build something know what our guidelines are, maybe not ordinances, but guidelines. And so that they have eyes wide open when they come in and think about building something here. Out of the nine municipalities that you listed, eight of them have some type of standards. So I think it would be wise for us to either, to actually develop a comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plan or design guidelines? I guess I want to...
Well, I mean, in reading through your definition, I'm not sure if I understand the difference between the two.
Comprehensive plan would be taking basically even our comprehensive plan, adding to that what opportunities there are, and implementing those opportunities in there. Design guidelines may be, for example, in a residential, you know, it depends on the limits. On a residential, single-family home that gets raised, do you want to implement something for a single-family home, or does it have to be five homes?
The real thing is, do you want it mandated, or do you want it recommended? I think that's what, that's what we're...
Right.
That's what these two are...
And if you look at the, and if you look at the nine municipalities, it goes from Woodbridge with nothing to ones that have recommendations, and then you have Naperville that has very strict guidelines. I mean, I think it's worked, like the mayor said, fairly well here. I think we should have some type of guidelines that give potential builders some idea of what we expect out of them, but I don't think we need to mandate anything.
Okay. So they're basically guidelines, almost like on a building, where we have guidelines for building a shed, for example. And then, you know, at least there's some sense of direction, and it's a handout, what we'd like to see. And again, I just want to reiterate that we do, we will always have, the city will always have opportunities to negotiate with developers on, especially large-scale projects. It's history that repeats itself always.
So how many of you feel that we should move towards recommendations versus mandates? Alderman Kenny, Alderman Shower, Alderman Belzak, and Alderman Sullivan? Tom?
I would say mandate. I just had one concern. This past week, the previous Alderman, Mr. Gillespie, mentioned where Dunkin' Donuts is, Darien Pantry, and Teddy Red Hot hasn't changed in over 40-some years and looks horrible, and he wished he did something when he was Alderman. So I got that comment from a previous elected official in my ward.
recommendations or mandates?
I'd like mandate, but if the council's going to recommendation, we can go...
You changed your name to Vaughn already?
Sorry?
You changed your name to Vaughn already?
No.
Oh, oh, sorry, I didn't hear.
I was asking Alderman Vaughn, since everyone else was raising their hand. Recommendations or mandates?
I say recommendations.
Okay. So we have a unanimous decision, Dan, on recommendations versus mandates.
And I'm going to refer to terminology as guidelines versus recommendations, if that's okay with the City Council.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll start to put something together, and once we put something together, we'll bring it over to our Municipal Services Committee for further input consideration. Again, if there's anyone that has some specifics, please, you know, forward them to me, because right now, I think the opportunity will be to take the various municipalities that have put things together and pick and choose items. Also, I'd like to thank our city planner for helping on putting this report together as well. With that said, I want to move on to another subject here in regards to refuse. It seems like every three months to six months, a refuse comes up, refuse containers. Our city code, number one, has the, allows refuse containers to be out 24 hours prior and after. So residents have the opportunity for 48 hours to have their refuse containers out. Approximately about a year, year and a half ago, the City Council reviewed the refuse containers specifically to leave them out in front of their homes. And unanimously, the City Council said you had two opportunities. One, to purchase a, I'll call it box, toolbox, to put your containers in, and you could store them out front, or you have to put them inside the garage or on the side of your house. Back in about March, or March of this year, we had a, we started to canvass the neighborhoods again. In this case, we canvassed Hinswood. We had approximately 200 violations. Of those 200 violations, those included refuse containment, the majority of them having refuse containers out in front, and/or junk. I'm not talking about RVs, I'm not talking about fences, or any type of other code violations. What happens is, we started out with a door hanger, and Joe Henneville was our primary contact, who would go out there, put a door hanger up there, and in many instances, when the door hanger was being put on, the residents said, "What are you doing?" Joe would tell them, and now all of a sudden, that resident said, "Well, look across the street, see what they have." So we got accustomed with a lot of other zoning, violate potential zoning violations. Once the door hangers were put on there, a letter was also followed up with, to residents, stating you cannot have your refuse container out there. There'd be a compliance date. Once the compliance date was, the same was a week, and we were very generous with our time. Week, two weeks, whatever the case was, we'd go out there, residents met compliance, issue dismissed. Week later, two weeks later, a month later, the same residents are putting their refuse containers out there. So again, we've been inundated with these calls to refuse containers and general junk being put out in front of the homes. Recently, I just met with the chief to implement a different type of strategy. We have approximately 100 repeat violators, of which letters have been sent out. Our goal is to work with the police department and your CSO on these specific violators. A $25 ticket will be issued immediately. If there's additional violations that are founded, I have to make a backup, if there are additional residents that have refuse containers out, they will be given a door hanger. A door hanger will be followed up, again, with a letter and given to myself and/or Joe for a compilation of all these addresses. If they don't meet compliance, they will be given $25 tickets. And for the $25 ticket, there'll be an additional set of tickets that will be issued. We, the department, don't have the opportunity to enforce, to be able to be out there enough, whereas we felt that, in speaking with the chief, that the CSO is the best opportunity to help us get through this. With that said, we're going to look at specifically refuse containers, and pending how this works out with the CSO, expand it. Expand the program into RVs, boats, just general debris, fences. And the last final thing that we're going to look at, this is going to be about a six-month process, was in-house adjudication. To be able to take the fines that are generated from this, and any of the violators, we'll have the opportunity to come to the City Hall and adjudicate it along with our traffic court that's currently in place right now, versus going to Downers Grove, and versus wasting staff's time sitting in court for four to five hours, typically once a month, twice a month. So again, I just wanted to update City Council in regards to these, this issue of refuse containers, and specifically Alderman Belzak and Alderman Vaughn are probably going to get some phone calls on this. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of what was happening. Questions?
Dan, in part, too, the current enforcement, where we would issue a ticket and go to the, you know, go to the field court, that even to get to the field court could be a 30- to 60-day timeframe, and that's our normal procedure on some, you know, some of our zoning violations and other things that we might have to do. But it is, you're exactly right, that's not a way that we'll ever get the compliance of the ordinance that the council adopted. So really, this is, this is the only way that we're ever going to be able to go ahead and get compliance. And again, it was important to tell the council now because, you know, the internet's going to ring, and you're going to get calls and emails, and we have been really, really patient and tried our best to work with the residents, and we're to the point now, we want the council to know that it's time to enforce this.
And again, Brian, I'm sorry, to your point, you know, with the court systems, if a resident shows up with a ticket, and the judge asks, "Are you in compliance?", the resident says yes, ticket dismissed. So, you know, and again, this whole theory of doubling, we do have the opportunity to double the fines on a daily basis. The judges typically will not double, take into consideration for doubling these fines. So they give them the minimal fine, plus stuff to pay a $200 court cost, which we get no part of.
And the process, Dan, you're talking about follows a process the police already use for primarily parking tickets, things like that. It's kind of dovetailing off of that.
That's correct.
So it's not unique to us, or something that, you know, we don't do. We do it for certain violations, and we thought that this was a much better way to now add the garbage can violation in.
Correct. And maybe eventually expand it.
Eventually, correct.
We'll have to amend the city code in regards to adjudication again. This is a little bit of a work in progress. So be patient with us.
Questions? Alderman Kenny?
Clarification and question. You said 48 hours when you first started. So I always thought it was the night, 6 o'clock the night before garbage, and it's going to be coming in at 6 o'clock that night after. That's 24. How's it 48?
The day before, the day before. So you say your garbage pickup is on Tuesday.
Right. So I'm going to put it out, I'm going to put it out Monday night at 6 o'clock.
Put it out Monday. In theory, you could put it out Monday afternoon, Monday at noon.
Okay. I was always, I was always under pressure with 6 o'clock to 6 o'clock.
No, it's, yeah, 24 hours before and after.
Okay.
And again, you know, it's, you know, then you have a Thursday pickup. So just the timing of it, our town is, our town has four, I believe, four different schedules.
Clistic, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. When I was on Municipal Services, we had the container to hide sort of the refuse. A lot of residents taking advantage of it. They get reminded that maybe they need, use one maybe putting on the side of the house, sort of the general feedback on the outside refuse container that we brought up a few years ago.
That's what I was referring to, is the toolbox. So yes, it was a refuge container that had the opportunity to put in a larger can, two larger cans. I believe Alderman Belzak purchased one, that was prior to, if I'm not mistaken. I'm sorry, wrong person then. My apologies. But there was a handful of residents that did purchase them. Again, it was the cost factor of $200 to invest in this. it was the cost factor of $200 to invest in this. So, you know, we tried to, you know, we collaborated with Home Depot and I believe it was tough shed through them. So there was a good savings opportunity, but, you know, residents didn't want to do that.
Yeah, I have one and I think it works great. It's on the side of the house, hides everything, the wind doesn't blow it and fairly easy to put together. So.
Well, Dan, that container could be in the front of the house.
Correct.
In the driveway also.
That's what I'm saying, right. That's what we allowed. It was about 200 bucks.
Yeah, around there. Yeah. I have mine on the side of the house.
Alderman Kenny has a question.
Yeah, I wasn't quite finished with my questioning there. My apologies. When are you planning on doing the actual finding? So if a garbage can's out there next week, when are you going to?
This week. Actually, this week through Alderman Belzak's and Alderman Vaughn's. We're going to follow up on the list that we've crafted back in March and that was our.
So since we've got our new communication systems in place, I would really strongly suggest and urge that we put out saying that starting, I don't know, October, you know, November 1 or October 1, that this is going to go into effect and we can, we communicate it out to the residents for, you know, for say three weeks, four weeks that this is what's coming down the pike and hope to get, we can, maybe we can get them to, you know, self-correct without putting out, without putting out. And that's what we're spending, that's what, that's what we're spending $4,000 a month for communication to put that out.
But Alderman Kenny, with all due respect, we have been very vigilant in putting out in direct connect, trash containers may not be left outside in front of the home. So we've been very vigilant on there. We keep on getting calls, you know, in regards to people leaving their trash. And what it is, is it's basically a person that's been penalized already. Meanwhile, they see their neighbor who habitually leaves their stuff out and there's no repercussions.
Have you put, have you, we put out any kind of message that they're going to start getting fined $25?
Well, we've always fined them.
There's no downside to that. I think we'll do that. Yeah, I think.
Right, right.
You know, just hearing that out loud, if we're, you know, we're talking about one or two weeks and this has been going on, it won't hurt at all to give one last reminder.
One last reminder, starting, we're going to, starting October, whatever, whatever day you choose.
Yeah, I understand.
The city of Darien is going to start to enforce this thing strongly and hope that message, you know, hits home.
Okay, yeah. So really it's a reinforcer for additional reinforcement.
And then, and then the Alderman here, because I know Alderman Clistic's very good at communicating with his residents. I've got a Facebook page myself that we can, we can get that, we can get that message out. We can help you out with that as well.
Great, great. Yeah, I want to make sure everybody had the opportunity to, you know, hear it and understand it.
Okay.
That's fair. Because you know what's going to happen. Oh, you know, I didn't know, I didn't, I got, I got, I didn't know. And then we're going to start getting the calls. I don't want it.
Alderman Sullivan, she, you know, again, during your communications, you have reiterated of one as well.
Yeah.
Anything else for Dan? Dan, do you have anything else?
That's it for this evening.
Thank you.
Next week's chicken and bees.
All right. Press report, Michael?
Thank you, Alderman. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Sorry. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 202110 and the amount of $699,387.42 from the listed funds. Payroll for the period ended September 10th, the amount of $264,225.79 for a total to be approved of $963,613.21.
Motion to approve. Alderman Kenny, second by Alderman Shower. Any questions for Mike? If none, the roll.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
The warrant's been approved. The monthly report, Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. The monthly report for the four months ended August 31st reflect general fund year-to-date revenue of $5,618,149, expenditures of $4,485,983, current balance of $3,297,701. Water fund year-to-date revenue of $1,215,285, expenditures of $1,865,357, current balance of $2,809,452. Motor fuel tax fund year-to-date revenue of $722,589, expenses of $136,841, current balance $1,144,718. Water depreciation fund year-to-date revenue of $3,846, expenditures of $15,604, current balance of $2,427,235. And the capital improvement fund year-to-date revenue of $137,710, expenditures of $195,468 for a current balance of $5,384,769.
Any questions for Mike? Takes us to standing committee reports.
One right there.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, not so much regarding the report, but it's been about six months since we've experienced pandemic and in about four months since we redid our budget. I'm wondering at some point, can you give us a state of the budget report as to how we're doing compared to, well, obviously different than last year, but regarding how we changed our budget and cut back on a lot of things. I'm just wondering if we're, if there's anything else we needs to do or if, if our cutbacks are going to be successful based on our difference and different income we're getting this year.
Yeah. If you like, I can address some, a little bit of that now, just to give you.
I didn't want to put you on the spot. I was just hoping.
I'm used to that. Just to give you a little bit of an overview, I think things are going pretty well. I guess I want to be a little bit optimistic here. Of course, we did pull out the biggest part of our budget, which was our capital improvements, our roads, our sidewalks and everything. So that obviously is allowing us to save that money to go forward into the coming years. The differences that I've seen, there hasn't been a dramatic difference. Sales tax revenue is down somewhat, but the, the use tax, which is like on internet sales and everything, that's been increased. That's largely a result of the change. There was a Supreme Court case a couple of years ago that's giving us a bigger share of that. Starting in January of next year, that's going to change to an actual calculation of if you buy something and you live in Darien, we'll actually be, they'll actually be tracking that and we'll be getting that revenue. Right now, we're just getting our certain share of the whole pot that the state is getting. So that could change. I don't, and I don't know what direction that would go. Does that mean we'd get more or less? That I don't have a feel for yet. One thing that I did find interesting in putting together this report though, if you look at it, the year-to-date or the four months to date, real estate tax collections this year are $1,546,000, last year $1,740,000. So real estate tax collections are down about $200,000 through August. Now, the second installment is due September 1st, but to me, it seems to be an indication that maybe some of the residents are struggling or postponing their payments. Maybe in the past, they paid both their installments with the first due date and now things are a little bit tighter. So they're postponing that. So it'll be interesting to see next month exactly how that shakes out. A lot of the other items though are, are better than I would have expected considering everything that we've gone through up to this point. And I can give you a little more specifics. At the next city council meeting, we will have the auditors here and we will have a finance committee meeting to review the balances from the audit that at least get us caught up to date as of April 30th. But at that point, really, the effects of all this haven't been known. But that's a little bit of a bird's eye view as far as how I think. The good news is, I don't think we have to jump off the, well, good news is it's a short building. So we don't have to jump out the door at this stage. But let's be cautiously optimistic that things hold up there. Some of the other things, I mean, the, the gas tax, the food and beverage tax obviously are down, but not significantly. So.
Thank you.
Just two points to add. One, we made, we made our first submittal to the county for our CARES Act COVID money and the council approved that intergovernmental agreement. And we're, at the top end, we're eligible for about a little over a million dollars if we were ever to hit those expenses. But our first submittal was about $750,000 and we submitted it all at once this past week. And so we're waiting probably 30 days to hear they have some kind of audit process, they look through it. But, but that was a good first submittal. We're happy to come up with, with that amount of money, which include our, our rebate program to the businesses. Secondly, and Mike and I will talk more about this, the, the state of the COVID and impact, we could look back and it's still cloudy out there. So it is really going to be hard. Cause I, you know, I have had some questions. Oh, if these couple of months were better, can we start doing projects again? And I'm just saying, well, no, we better, you know, we, the council amended the budget this year and the crystal ball going out the next six months is really, really hard. But we can certainly, you know, to date, give a, give a pretty good indication.
And that wasn't my suggestion. It was more of.
Not yours, but I have.
Are we doing, have we done enough as, as the money's coming in?
Got it.
And it appears that we have. So.
Actually, what we're looking at is the possibility of, we know, if we get the money reimbursed to us that we've asked for, that we signed off on last week, we know how much is potentially still there. Like Brian said, based on our per capita 5184 per resident, we're about $2.1 million or $1.1 million. And we would probably have another $300,000 we could use. But that has to last us between now and the end of the year. And we don't know what those expenses are going to be. But I've had a lot of inquiries. I've called almost all the major restaurants with regard to their plans for outdoor dining in the fall. And all of them would like some assistance with regard to more permanent or more permanent structures outside their buildings or heaters, things like that. And so we don't know exactly what we're going to do for them because again, we're limited to how much we have left in that, in that account. I mean, we would get reimbursed for it if we used it, but then we're going to, we could have other costs. And the fact that we went orange two weeks ago and we could go orange again, and we could have restrictions on restaurants in terms of indoor dining, or we could see an increase in the number of COVID cases. We got to play cautiously. We really do. Mary?
Not to channel Game of Thrones, but winter is coming and I'm concerned as well because if the county or the state doesn't change the amount of people that can be inside, it really limits to, you know, people's ability to dine in. And then if we were to go backwards, like Will and Kankakee County went backwards and they're right next to us, they were several weeks, well, at least three weeks, I believe, without any indoor dining. And so it really limited them. And I mean, this week, thankfully, we've got warm weather again, but it is Chicago. And I think we need to really look at how we can support because, you know, let's be realistic. What's going to change, you know, between October 1, November 1, December 1 and into the new year? And I know many places, many people, you know, are completely abandoning the idea of any type of holiday gathering, Christmas party. And that's going to be a huge hit to our restaurants that usually have banquets and even just, you know, going out with a few people. I mean, but people will be catering, but catering where? I mean, you know, maybe into their office space, but are people even in their office space? So just concern for our businesses.
In my phone conversations with the restaurant owners, their comment is, we don't know where we're going. And they really are quite concerned about what they're going to do this fall. Even if they build a more permanent structure outside with heaters and such, they have a, that in and of itself is not enough for them to maintain. They still need to have that 25% indoor dining as well. And if they were to lose that, that would be a significant loss. And while we have been very, very fortunate that we really only lost one restaurant and that was the Steak and Shake, my concern is after talking to them on the phone, that we could see others that we might lose if things get worse again. So we really need to give, we really need to take a look at what we can do to help them. And I think one of the ways we all help them is by wearing the masks, social distancing, et cetera, et cetera. But at the city level, we need to take a look at what we might be able to do financially for them. And again, that's a more limited amount. But they are extremely, extremely nervous about where we're going.
Well, let's face it, even if they come out with a vaccine, I think it's going to be some time before everyone gets comfortable again going into, even if they allow 50% or 75% indoor dining. Now you're getting into winter, people have gotten acclimated to the outside part of it. But even if they go up to 50% indoor, I think people are going to be at least initially reluctant until we get a little farther down the road, which is probably going to take into next year. And we hope these businesses can survive. So.
Anyone else? Okay. Standing committee reports? Tom?
Yes, next Monday, municipal services will be having your meeting at 7:00 PM in council chambers and the chicken and bee ordinance will be on the agenda.
Thank you. Mary?
On our next, well, not next, the city council meeting on October 5th, the admin finance committee will meet at 6:00 PM prior to the meeting in the upstairs conference room. And the economic development committee is going to reconvene. They haven't been able to in some time on Wednesday, October 14th at 7:00 PM here in council chambers, where they will start to prepare their year in review and then be presenting it at a city council meeting after that.
Joe?
The police committee did not meet this evening, was canceled due to a lack of agenda items. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 19th at 6:00 PM in the police training room across the parking lot.
Thank you very much. Questions and comments, agenda related? I don't believe we have anything left on the agendas. Probably aren't any questions or comments. Takes us to old business, there being none. Takes us to consent, there being none. We go to new business, there is, there is no new business. Takes us to questions and comments and announcements of a general nature. Does anybody have anything they'd like to present to the council? Alderman Clistek?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a quick second to thank you for the letter you put in Darien Connect with regards to all the hard work city staff has done during this time. I know it can be extremely challenging, especially with all the COVID fatigue. As Alderman, Mary mentioned, COVID fatigue, it takes a mental toll on all of us. One of the things I've noticed a lot of companies have done, especially Google have offered a mental day to employees. And I'm just wondering if that's something that we can maybe offer city staff that are maybe not represented by union, because I think those are different rules that have to be followed. But if that's something that maybe we can offer staff, offer them a day off for challenges or struggles they have with regards to COVID fatigue, if that's something anyone would be interested or following up on mayor's great letter for regards to how well the staff has done. If that's something maybe we can take a look at for the next meeting or discuss next meeting.
Anything else? Ted?
No, nothing.
Mary?
I just want to applaud all of our remote learners, our e-learners, our students, our parents, our teachers. In our Darien community, we have a lot of different scenarios going on in terms of how our, our children, young and older, even our college age kids are learning. And I just want to give a shout out to everybody who's working super, super hard, especially those parents that are working from home, helping assist their children learn from home and continue to show support for the teachers and the school community who are doing their very best to get the kids back into the building safely. And I just want to say, keep up with the good work.
Teachers with small, teachers with small kids, they have to teach and put their kids through that. That's the ones I got my, you know, my.
Well said, Mary.
I wanted to say something that I, that we, I never have a chance to say, but it occurred to me this week that we really need to do this. I get to come here every day to city hall. And, you know, you go on social media and you hear people nitpick certain little things. The fact of the matter is I'm here every day. I see what goes on in this building every day. I see what the staff does, how dedicated they are. During the entire COVID situation, we had everybody here working every day. This staff is excellent. That document that asked for the $700,000, we had two people who worked on that extensively. It was like, I think, 189 pages of documentation that needed to be completed. The work that was done on that was tremendous. These people every day give you 100%. The people of Darien don't oftentimes realize that these people here that work on this staff, as lean as we are as a staff, they, they really go out of their way to make Darien a nice place to live. So I want to offer my thanks. And I'm going to add something to this. I get an opportunity to work with this gentleman every day and people don't see all the work he does and how important the work is that he does. And I can only thank him for the fact that I get a chance to spend time and bounce ideas off of him every day and hear his response. And he is an outstanding city administrator and I want you to know that. Not that you don't, but I want the residents of this city to know that he is an outstanding city administrator. So thank you, Brian.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. One comment, not to be a buzzkill, but Alderman Clistek had asked about additional days off. A high percentage of our employees are covered by collective. A high percentage of our employees are covered by collective bargaining agreements, that we just don't take or take away days away, and while I, again, appreciate, you know, all the work that employees do, without revising collective bargaining agreements, you know, additional days off isn't, wouldn't happen, so, again, a nice gesture, a nice thought, but you had mentioned something, I think at the end, that we can maybe talk about it next week, but I just wanted to mention it now, so you don't have an expectation that we can be giving, you know, additional days off.
Yeah, I've seen that a few companies do that, so let's, offer that up, so.
Anything else? Anybody have anything to say? If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Alderman Kenny, second by Alderman Shower, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, folks, it's nice to have all of you back. Alderman Vaughn, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you guys, we're flexible.